Testing.
Looks like a new control panel. That's one on that camera up there for us.
There you go.
Yeah.
Up and running?
Let me just bring in the panelists. All right, Scotty and Richard are coming on now.
Okay. They can hear? Okay, I'll get started. Okay. Going to order the meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated, Special Improvement District Board of Trustees Meeting for Thursday, January 14th, 2021. It is 7:08 PM. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to provisions of DSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting such notice in Town Hall at the Township's website, by notification to newspapers on December 23rd, 2020, and by providing notice to the Township Clerk. Ask you all to please stand for the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask for roll call, please?
Yep, I'm first gonna call the voting members. Jomana Culligan.
Here.
Tracy Katzlevi, me here. Andrew Morgan.
Here.
Nadez Nicole.
Yeah.
Michael Parlebeckio.
Here.
Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Stephen Weiner.
Here.
And our two additional members, Alex McDonald. He stepped out, but he's here, okay. And Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, approval of minutes. We have minutes that were circulated of the December 8th, 2020 meeting. Everybody had, everyone had a chance to review them, make any edits that are necessary. If they are acceptable, I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor to approve those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of December 8th, 2020 are approved. And Tracy Alex McDonald has rejoined us in the meeting room.
Okay, great, thanks.
Just before we get into public comment, if it's, if nobody minds, since we, as you can see here up on the dais, we have some separation and not only by distance, but there are plexiglass dividers in between us and some seating between us. If nobody minds if, when I go into a roll of talking, if I take the mask off for a little bit, makes anybody uncomfortable, please just let me know. Next portion of the meeting, public comments session. I'd ask everyone, when you, or if you're in the room, when invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. If you have a prepared statement, please give it to, give a copy to, to us at mshsid@milburntownship.org. There are also people who are joining us remotely, and you two will have three minutes to speak, and I ask that you limit your comments to that amount of time, so everybody gets a chance to say what they want to say, and we can have everyone fully participate. So, we're starting with everybody, people in the room. If anybody wants to come up, make a public comment, please join us.
Hi, Vicki Powell, 358 C Milburn Avenue. I, I don't wanna talk about the budget, I can talk about the budget when we come to the budget, correct?
Uh, no, now's the time to do it. So, ju- just to get, I'm not taking away from your time. All we're doing is talking about the budget, it then gets delivered to the Township Committee. The public hearing is really up there, whenever it gets on there.
Well, I have questions about some of the stuff that's on the budget.
Okay.
Um, alright, so I'm gonna go to that then. Um, I wanted to know, um, my biggest concern on this is the Winter Walk contribution for $5,000. I, I wanna know, the budget is, as it reads here now, you have spring events, summer events, Halloween, and there's no fourth quarter events for the holiday season. Is that the Winter Walk contribution? Because I think $5,000 is an awful lot of money to put lights in Taylor Park when the Chamber has still money to receive from the old SID and also got $16,000 originally. I think $1,000 would probably be a little bit more comparable and spend the $4,000 on doing things in town for the fourth quarter for the holiday season, for shop small, et cetera. I mean, I think that's a little bit more money, you know, events, advertising, I think that would probably be a better well spent for our money for to do things that will benefit us. I think the lights are great in Taylor Park, but I think we also need some help in the five districts to bring people into town at the holidays.
Okay.
So, that's my biggest concern on this. And also, I had questions about what are the visual improvements that you're spending all this money on? What is your ideas on what you're thinking to spend $11,000 and $15,000 especially? That was my other question and concern. And then I just had a question for the marketing with Marla. I wondered, was just curious to see how many people entered the contest that they ran? And are we gonna ramp up some community communications, you know, to the merchants? You know, holidays are over, what are we gonna do for the holidays? Are we gonna promote it? I know Marla hasn't given her thing, so I'm pretty sure she could be covering that, but there's no other place to talk except to now. So, those are my biggest concerns that I have questions.
All right, and Vicki, I think you hit it on the head. You'll hear more about the budget, what went into it, what went into some of the decision making. And Stephen will address that, visual improvements we'll get into as well, and Marla will give her presentation. So, I think your questions will be answered at some point.
Okay. But can this budget be changed at any point?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Feld. I'm, I live at 11 Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. My family have been residents prior to the conversion, the Midtown Direct. First, I do shop locally, and I tell everyone, this is a shout out advertisement, get the bookmark and read some of the quotes on the bookmark, because they apply to what we're doing here tonight. Prior to this meeting, I sent various written submissions. I have a list of questions. When I submit questions to the county, we're known as realtors, but now the county commissioners, I do get a response. I still have not got responses, received any responses from my prior letters, and I like to get responses to what we're doing today. We really should look historically, what's happened since the first meeting in September. One, as to public comments, now, public comments are coming out at the beginning of the meeting, plus there's a recognition that you are state actors. You're subject to the Open Public Meetings Act and the Open Public Records Act. When you look at the agenda, I don't know if it qualifies under the Open Public Meetings Act, because I can't tell from looking at the four corners, what official action you're gonna take tonight. And one of the issues you're gonna hear is goes back to the validity of this organization. There's litigation. I'm representing one of the parties before the local finance board on a reconsideration motion about exclusivity. The tax court issued an opinion at the end of last year, which agrees, a published opinion, which is binding authority, which agrees with my understanding of exclusivity. There's two other issues as to state preemption, is when this organization was created, going back to August, did you comply with state law? There's an irony, a very big wrinkle here. All the trustees are appointed by the Township Committee. They're not elected by the people who eventually will pay the assessment. I don't think that's valid under state law. You never got a feasibility study. There's also issues as to the budgets. In calendar year 2020, you allocate approximately $16,000. When you read the state statute and you read the ordinance, and the ordinance, it says that the budget has to be approved by two public hearings at the TC. That never occurred. If, and I said in my letter, you need to see what happened at the last Township Committee meeting. There's a real legal issue as to your allocation of monies. But I know my time is up, but there's state preemption. I gave you a clue as to what questions, I gave you a take home exam. One of the issues that we've been asking, the municipal attorney, who's not here, is what is the effect of filing a lawsuit within a 20-day estoppel period? I know this gentleman, who's an attorney, knows the answer to that. For the people at home, you start Googling the following phrases, Justice Albin, West Doran, Bond, estoppel period. If a complaint is filed within the 20-day estoppel period, no attorney can deliver a clean opinion as to the transaction. I'm still wondering how we ever got a clean opinion as to your validity. I have a series of questions, be careful. I know my way to the courthouse. This gentleman knows that. We've been involved in a lot of litigation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feld. If I could just, I can't respond to any of the legal portion of it, just with regard to your prior responses and your reference to our now Board of Commissioners. Unfortunately, we don't have the staff or the, or the full-time people to get those answers cranked out in seven days. I know we're trying to get them to you. I did see, and everybody got a copy of what you sent most recently, and some of those things we can answer, some we can't, but
The purpose of my letters
I just wanted to respond.
No, I don't see that. I don't expect to get an answer within seven days, but expand before the next meeting, like within 30 days. The purpose of my letters, and this is something for the people who are not attorneys on the Board of Trustees, it's a question of willful blindness. I'm putting giving you heads up notice of what a lot of issues, you're taking a take home exam. Beware of an ostrich that puts its head in the stand. Its backside is always exposed.
I'm gonna put that one on my next Christmas card. Does anybody else wanna speak? Anybody else who's?
I do like to listen to what people have to say before I make my comments, so.
That's very dramatic. Yes, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Okay, so we'll go to whoever's online, thank you.
Hi, Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. I have a few questions, a couple of comments. I'm gonna go and comment again on what Mr. Feld just said about talking about transparency, really, is what the issue is. I've emailed both the board, your board secretary, as well as the address that's now being used, the Gmail address, and I have received a reply, but it's not signed by anybody, not an individual. So, I don't know who's actually replying to my emails. I think there needs to be a person's name attached to those emails, so that if there are questions or issues, you know who you're dealing with. I thought it should have been the board secretary, from what I understood, but if that's not the case, then who is replying and who is considering the emails that are sent by members of the public? In fact, I did submit a rather lengthy one regarding my concern that I've raised in prior meetings about the conflict of interest or the rule violation regarding a 501(c)(3) engaging in political campaigning, and I did not receive any reply or remarks to that. But I also didn't know who I was sending it to and where it went. So, it'd be nice to have that information. The other thing I was gonna say is, with respect to the monies that are being allocated in the budget, I did through the last Township Committee meeting, where I have to say I was aghast at the treatment of a member of the public who was expressing concerns about no public input on the budget, the temporary budget, prior to the vote being taken on the budget. I think there were very legitimate concerns about suppression of political free speech, and I really hope that that's going to be prevented in this, this body. I'd like to understand how that's going to take place, and I'm hoping, my, my suggestion to you is, would you consider more than one public comment period, so that people will be able to have input on official actions being taken? And then I guess my last comment is, from reading the tonight's agenda, I was confused as to what official actions were being considered and what, how you would do that without a retained attorney present and so forth. So, those are my comments for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Is somebody there listed as BPM?
Hi, Perry Urso, just want you to know, I'm yielding my time to Jeff Feld, thank you. I'm lowering my hand.
I don't think we go by congressional rules of procedure, but okay.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Dominique Urso, 508 Milburn Avenue. I would like to confirm that all board members has, have received my current statement from the January 5th, 2021 TC Township Committee meeting, where I was not granted the courtesy to finish my public comments. Why, why is this board continuing its functionality while there are ongoing litigation? Who is the counsel advising this entity? Why are not all five districts our beneficiaries of the newly adopted SID ordinance since August of 2020? Some facts, the downtown property owners and merchants benefits, number one, assessment reduction in year 2022. Number two, the first event, Halloween, held on Milburn Avenue and Main Street Downtown location, was certified by Jackie Lieberberg. Number three, second event, the Winter Walk, held in Taylor Park Downtown. Explore Milburn afforded other districts with a short drive while the majority businesses are within a walking distance downtown. Does that sound like a pedestrian mall to all of you? Please clarify lighting up the street poles throughout downtown. While the BA stated at the January 5th, 2021 Township Committee meeting, reorganization meeting, when questioned by committee woman Diane Eglo regarding budget line item of electrical at a total of $80,000, he included Upper Milburn Avenue and Chatham Road. So, where are they and when? Please give this clarification, if you wouldn't mind. Why stakeholders are not afforded all bids submitted prior to awarding contracts or how, or, excuse me, or told how many bids or applicants have been received? Number one, executive director at 80,000 or more. Number two, marketing at a total of 35,000 or more. Number three, website designer at 7, 7,200 plus. So, if you need me to repeat any questions, so you can go down the line and answer them, that would be great.
Okay, I'm not gonna answer them now. We did receive your written submission, which I think you just summarized. So, if there's something there that we need to respond to, we will respond to you.
Right, and I would just like to add that I don't know why I was just muted by Alex.
But you, I don't know, he can speak for himself, maybe he thought you were done, I don't know.
No, it's happened to me in other times, but I hope it wasn't on purpose.
Okay.
Right, but is anyone gonna answer any of those questions?
We're not gonna answer now, but we could, we can respond to you. We, I'll respond to your written questions.
You can't say anything about the lights and why Upper Milburn Avenue is always shut down?
I cannot speak for the Township Committee and what happened at the Township Committee meeting, I'm not, I'm not here to do that.
No problem, just notice the emphasis on everything is always downtown, but Upper Milburn Avenue is going to pay for this.
Your emphasis.
Made sure it's clear, thank you.
Hello?
Mr. Futter, you're on.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, I'll just list them. If you wanna stop me, you can at any point. I'm curious to know, in the status of the 501(c)(3), which, or any or all of the four prerequisites to qualify charitable, educational, religious, or scientific purpose, the SID is doing or intends to do in relation to the 501(c)(3) and your conflict of interest and compensation policy? When you filed or made application for your 501(c)(3), did you not include a conflict of interest statement with that application? If so, is this an amendment to that, and will you be filing this amendment with the IRS? And the conflict of interest that you are proposing, is it in concert with the DCA and Local Finance Board? Does it meet the IRS requirements? Does it exceed? Is it more restrictive than the IRS would normally be or the Local Finance Board? I'm just curious to know how that falls in as far as complying with the 501(c)(3) status. Last question that I have is that, and this does have to do with the SID. At the last Township Committee meeting, there was $50,000 to an organization called Downtown Milburn Alliance. Is that the SID? I don't know, because I don't like to unveil unawareness here, but I have never heard of that. I've heard of the Downtown Milburn Development Alliance, and when questioned about how much appropriation could be made in a proposed budget, we were told, I think, 26.2 or 26.8% of the previous year's budget, and there was no SID last year. I don't know how they did it. I know how they came up with the number. I understand what they did, but I don't know how it got appropriated and how it got appropriated to an organization of that name. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I, I think we have a portion of the meeting where we'll discuss the conflict of interest policy, so I can, if I could save that for, I'll be speaking to that in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? No one else? Okay.
All right, so Nancy Stone, Nancy and David Finejules.
Thank you.
Is that 30 seconds, or? I was just gonna say, I did lose five pounds in case I get kicked out again, so I wanted to be a lighter weight for the police. Anyway, just to let you know, being the previous treasurer, I'm very disappointed to see, what, 10, 20, 30, 40, 46,000 appropriated to programming and over 115,000 towards salary. This was the biggest gripe that I had, the biggest, one of the top reasons, top three reasons why I chose to end the DMDA with the board that we had. Again, this was supposed to be started for the merchants and to be able to, that needs to be flip-flopped, whether you need to get volunteers to help with this, but that money should be appropriated to helping the merchants, the way Wasserman touted, Jackie touted. It's not enough money, which leads me to believe, is the assessment gonna go up because there's not enough money for programming? I can tell you, there's approximately $5,600 left that hasn't been appropriated yet, only because we had to keep the books open for QuickBooks, because for anybody who's listening, this is really important, if you keep the books online, you don't have access to it, and unless I paid for it out of pocket, out of my own pocket, we wouldn't have had access to the data for any type of auditing purposes. So, I was told by the accountant, we filed the return accordingly, and you'll get it accordingly, and I have all the records to prove everything, so I have no problem. But I have a big problem with the Winter Walk contribution, because the Milburn Chamber was given $16,000, and this was something when Stephanie Murphy was the president, I believe that was grossly overspent on Winter Walk, and they don't I believe that was grossly overspent on Winter Walk, and they don't deserve one penny of that money. Put it to something else. Let them do the fundraising for their own organization. Don't put the burden on you guys. Let them do that. They shouldn't be looking to you for the money for it. Absolutely, that $5,000 should be allocated to something else that is programming for the merchants. On another note, you know, it would be nice to get some answers here, because we have to go to the next meeting, to the next meeting. It's very difficult to wait and not get an answer. I'm glad that Jean asked the question, who's answering the emails? Because we're getting emails, dear sir, or dear ma'am, whatever. And we don't know who's, you know, who's the odds behind the curtain. And I'm just curious from my own information or my own curiosity, how do you and Jeff really know each other? Michael, how do you and Jeff, what's your relationship together? Because you seem to know each other, but it would be nice to know.
All right, I don't want to cut in your time, but
Okay, no, go ahead.
You know, it's a professional relationship. I met him here for the very first time, but I, we were pen pals. We were email buddies for a long time in our, with other hats on.
Okay, so it was just through like your county?
Lawyer stuff, yeah, it's just legal matters.
Michael, may I answer the question that a few people asked, and Alex can help support me on the answer, about the emails and who is answering them?
Tracy, let's just hang on a minute.
Okay, sure.
There's nobody else?
Sorry, it was a little hard to hear. I thought that was the end of the public comments.
Okay, Tracy, did you want to talk about the emails?
Yeah, just because several people asked, and that's a good question and something we ourselves were discussing. So I'm the secretary of the organization, so I am keeping all the records of all the communications that are received and sent by the organization. The MSH SID at Milburn Township mailbox is monitored by Alex on a regular basis, who forwards to us in a timely way any communications that are to the board. We did just discuss yesterday, it was really inadvertent that there was not a signature that was brought to our attention, that because several people monitored that box, that when someone replies, it doesn't have a specific person's signature. So going forward, we will ensure that whoever is the person who initially received the email and is forwarding it along, signs their name, but it is being monitored regularly. The communications that come in and are asked to be distributed to the board are distributed to the full board. I am keeping copies of all those in our records. I will mention, you know, we are working hard and to get our agendas up in a timely manner. And we are also working hard to review communications that are received before the meeting, but just realistically, if we receive communications the day of the meeting, it's often not realistic for them to be reviewed beforehand. But we think we have closed the loop and any gap that there's been in the past on emails being forwarded. I want to just follow that upward saying, once we get our website and our organization fully in place, we will be letting everybody know of a new independent email directly for Explore Milburn Short Hills that we will transition to the more directly received communications. Alex, did I state that all accurately from your perspective? Anything to add?
No, that's correct.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, moving along. Administrative updates, I think I have a couple items here. Number one, the conflict of interest policy, which was posted, we did discuss at some length at the December 8th meeting. Based on those comments, we made edits to reflect that the board certainly includes by definition district business owners who will be entitled, just by virtue of their businesses, they may be entitled to receive certain benefits from the corporation, so that was put in place. There was a question, will this be made part of the 501(c)(3) filing? Yes, it will be. It would, the filing was originally done either at the time the organization was created or shortly thereafter, so we will add this to our filing. It is an item that we will be taking action on. And just as an aside to that, I think whoever brought that point up, that is a good point for our agendas going forward. I'll make sure that any items we intend to take action on, we will list as such on the agenda, so I think that was a good point. But that is all I have to say about the conflict of interest policy. It is substantially the same as it was on the 8th, except for the edits that I mentioned. If anybody has any other comments or questions about that? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt that conflict of interest policy. Motion. Okay, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. If I could have a, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, we've adopted the conflict of interest policy, which we will now append to our 501(c)(3) application. All right, the next item I have is the NJEDA grant application, somewhat budget-related or something that's outside the budget. In late December, we became aware that the New Jersey Economic Development Authority announced a $2 million grant program they called Sustain and Serve New Jersey. It's supposed to provide funding to organizations to purchase meals in bulk from New Jersey-based restaurants that have been impacted negatively by COVID-19, and then distribute it to New Jersey residents at no cost. This is something where we could receive up to, well, not we, but the program recipients could receive up to $100,000 as a grant. The issue we had was restaurants couldn't apply directly, and we were not, we didn't have a record of providing meals. So we couldn't apply directly. So we connected with Flag of Milburn Short Hills, who in the last year has done very good, wonderful job raising money and distributing meals to people, so with their help and our help, Flag applied earlier this month for a grant. Their intention would be to charge $10 for their meals so that the restaurants can make profits. Should the grant be received, as I said, it would be $100,000 at least to be used by April 30th. We did send out notification back in the end of December to our district eateries and restaurants, and did encourage them to add their name to the Sustain and Serve New Jersey registry. Flag, the intention of Flag is successful. They'd equitably distribute the funds to support Milburn Short Hills Restaurants, and then those, the food would be served to local hospitals and first aid squads. So the idea would be to keep the restaurants moving, to keep their staff paid. It also provides meals to those who need them at a low cost to the restaurants, and hopefully it's something that they can turn a profit on. So we will keep an eye on that, and I don't know what the target date is for hearing about whether or not we receive the grant, but we will certainly keep everyone updated. Alex, did you have any administrative updates? Maybe the five, if there was anything on 501(c)(3), I think the only issue I touched on about the conflict of interest. Okay, moving on. Updates from Township Committee Meeting, and we have Richard Wasserman's going to speak on that part.
Thank you so much, Michael. I'm gonna just lower my mask for a second. I'm kind of with Jackie in the side room, so I'm not exposed to too many people here. So the news from Township Committee at the last meeting was basically the reorg. So Tara Propus is become the mayor, and I am the deputy mayor. And that was pretty much the focus of the last TC meeting. And that's, you know, so that's, that's basically, you know, I'll touch on some other issues that, you know, when I report on the next, you know, on the next agenda item.
Richard and Michael, can I mention one thing, just for everyone's information? You can ensure I'm stating this correctly, it was just that based on the meeting that Richard is now the voting Township Committee representative for the SID board and Mayor Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg, I think we still use the title mayor, am I right, even after the fact? Is the mayor's appointee, so a non-voting member. Am I stating that correctly?
Yes, yes, you are.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody just knew about that direct impact for our group.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, deputy mayor. Next, we're on to subcommittee updates. Our first subcommittee update is marketing.
Okay, great. So I will jump in and invite Jumanita to jump in as well on marketing. The bulk of our marketing update will come through Marla Itskin, our marketing consultant's update a little later. But I'll just say, we were just so excited about the energy and excitement among merchants in town around the holiday time, around the windows, at the baskets, a little bit of collaboration with no money involved on Winter Walk, just trying to tie it to people, inviting them to, if they're coming to Winter Walk, to dine at our eateries as well. A lot of great traction on social media, so as I said, Marla will be giving more details on that shortly. There's two key things I wanted to cover during this time. The first is our website development. We presented at the last meeting the RFP, the Request for Proposal, that we put forth in the community. We researched agencies with the right capabilities to develop a high-caliber website. Our preference was to work with a resource that has a business within the SID district, though if we couldn't meet our needs with that, we would go beyond that. We had originally identified three agencies within the community, and then found that one of them no longer had their Milburn office. So we received two very thoughtful responses to the Request for Proposal, one from New Frontier and one from Premier Creative. And we really appreciate from both of them their interest in the SID and in supporting these efforts. We developed criteria on which to assess these proposals. We had several members, in addition to Jumana, Marla, and myself, we had several members of our marketing subcommittee, including some very high-level marketing professionals, review the responses, and we had criteria on which we were measuring them. And we posted in the meeting for tonight, the recommended proposal, which is New Frontier. So they were, you know, right on budget with our, you know, targeted budget. They were the lower-cost proposal by several thousand dollars, and everything they presented made them a very strong fit. I will mention that they recently worked on a project for the Milburn Short Hills Historical Society, for which there was very, very positive feedback, so that worked in favor as well. So we are making a recommendation to move ahead on this proposal. I will mention that the budget for the website was actually part of the funds that were approved for the end of 2020 budget process. We realized, however, that we should be discussing the recommendation and making the formal recommendation of which agency we're going to work with at this meeting, which is why it was deferred a little bit into this year. Jumana, anything to add about the marketing RFP before we pull the group, or any questions?
No, I don't have anything to add really, except that I wanted to just second that we thought New Frontier was, you know, definitely the best fit for us.
Yeah. I will mention, I know Nadeja Nicole, in her merchant capacity, is in some dialogue with New Frontier, so I know she is recusing herself from this part of the discussion and any vote that we take.
And Nadeja did send a note out to that effect earlier.
Thank you, Nadeja. Any questions from other members of the board on this, Richard? Yep.
Yeah, and also, Tracy, is it correct that New Frontier was the lowest bid?
Yes, so it was lower by several thousand dollars, yes.
And also, I also think because of your good work, they also agreed to throw in extras for us because we're starting out.
Yes, so that was, there were a couple of elements, yeah, thank you, Richard, for mentioning that. So in addition to, you know, what we felt was really good quality ideas and work on developing an excellent website with an excellent directory function, which is what's going to be key for our merchants, they were offering the first six months of post-implementation support at no cost. And I will say that even before the RFP process, David Sorkin, the principal at New Frontier, had proactively approached us to say, to keep him posted on our 501(c)(3) status, because they would be happy to help us apply for and hopefully benefit from a Google nonprofit grant, which actually provides up to $10,000 a month in free online advertising for nonprofits. So he reiterated in the RFP their willingness to work with us on that as well. So there was some very good value added. Any other questions from anybody? Okay, so our recommendation is to move ahead along this front. Michael, do we need to take a vote on that? What's the right protocol?
Yeah, we should approve, if everybody's in favor of that, we should take a vote. If there's a motion to approve retention of New Frontier, website development. Somebody move that?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of New Frontier? Anyone opposed? You know what? You're absolutely right, because we have one abstention. Let's take a roll call instead of taking a voice.
Okay, okay. Jumana?
Yes.
Myself? Yes, Tracy? Andrew?
Yes.
Nadeja's the abstention. Michael?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, okay. New Frontier, if you're watching, we look forward to working with you. We will officially communicate with them following the meeting, so we're excited about that. Okay, other topic that we wanted to get some feedback on, this has been a discussion over the past couple of weeks during the holiday time, is to get some input from the board about holiday-related posts. To what extent should we be, now that we're getting more active on social media, be putting up posts for specific holidays? So that was Christmas, there was Hanukkah, there was Kwanzaa, we have the Lunar New Year coming up. Other, you know, seasonal holidays or events coming up. So we wanted to get some thoughts from the group about whether we, you know, our main goal, of course, is to drive business to our merchants. Many holidays do have possible tie-ins. Some holidays and occasions are, you know, kind of a key part of the community, so wanted to put that out there on thoughts on that front. Jumana, do you have thoughts or any further way of phrasing the question before we?
Not really. I mean, I, I, the only concern would be is like, let's say we forget to mention a particular holiday, and you know, it makes me, that's the only thing, no, but I don't really have anything specific to add to that. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, to be honest with you.
All right, so we'd love to get some thoughts, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what other people think, and
Exactly.
Yeah.
I guess, is about the question a little bit, is it that we, is the question whether we should post any because of the risk of missing holidays? Or is it, what?
I guess it's a two-part. One is, should we post any holiday posts? Or are we concerned we're going to miss holidays? Or assuming we will post holiday posts, how do we determine which holidays we post for? That's, those are the questions. So let's hear some thoughts, and then we can try to sum it up into a decision point. Did that articulate the question, Stephen?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I was just trying to think.
Yeah.
I mean, my knee-jerk reaction, I guess, to start the conversation would be, to the extent businesses are having promotions or having events related to holidays, those should certainly be posted to promote the businesses that are involved, right? So I'm not sure we have an obligation to make sure all holidays are covered. we have an obligation to make sure all holidays are covered. But, but of course, I don't, I don't want to miss any either. But I think if, if a business is having a, I don't know, a Christmas store and having a Christmas sale, they should be, we should have some sort of posting around that event or that. Just because it's Christmas, I guess, shouldn't be then, oops, I can't post it. I, I don't know. Michael, what are your thoughts?
I agree. I think it should be, right, it's not holiday-focused as much as it is driving business-focused. So President's Day sale, or if it's a, I don't know, a Christmas, obviously, or something else. Arbor Day, if you miss that one, nobody's really going to scream. Maybe somebody will, but.
I was gonna say, careful what you say.
Somebody will.
Somebody might. I mean, I guess like, yeah, I mean, I agree, like, I think coming up would be Mardi Gras, for instance. Some people do those, like Three King, a bakery might do Three Kings cakes or something like that. Yeah, I, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
The touch point, you know, as you deal with different, my mind, unfortunately for me, always goes to food. So different, depending what the place is. You brought up Three Kings, maybe somebody does something in a bakery for that.
Yeah.
Maybe there's something else that, you know, maybe two bakeries don't do it, one does it. But as long as one of our members is
Right.
is promoting something or looking to get our support, we should really be behind it.
True. Yeah. Other folks, Richard, Jackie, Nadez?
I was just gonna say, as a retailer, as a retailer, you know, the holidays, and certainly other board members could speak of this, holidays are very sensitive. It's very important for social media, you know, very social media sensitive. I mean, for us, for, in my own case, Valentine's Day is, is very important. Christmas, you know, Valentine's Day and Christmas are probably our, our two, you know, our two more important holidays. And I think we just have to be sensitive to that, because a lot of restaurants, you know, I mean, I don't want to speak for restaurants, but I think that a lot of us in retail plan our cal, our social media calendar around holidays, you know, or with, with that focus. So we want to be sensitive to that, you know, we just want to be sensitive to that. And, you know, that's kind of my two cents.
I, I would just add that any way that we can be more inclusive, more engaging, more proactive, anything that's going to drive engagement, participation, revenue, I'm in. I think that's really something that, as well as, I think I mentioned it earlier, a community. So there may not necessarily be an immediate tangible connection between the social media, but just the more, I think, the more that we do this and the more comfortable everyone gets with it, the more participation and engagement over time. And I think that's, that would be a very important part of the exercise.
Nadez or Andrew, any?
So, yeah, I actually have a lot of what I'm going to say in my update tie in with that question, actually, Tracy. So when it's interesting to speak, I'll just refer back to it, if you don't mind.
Okay. Andrew, any further thoughts? I guess from what I'm hearing, I'm just going to try to synthesize. Any other thoughts before my trying to synthesize?
I know, I was only going to say, I would just be repeating what others have said, so.
Okay. So I think we all agree, we want to look at everything we do through the lens of what's going to help our merchants. And so we want to frame things around seasonal or other occasions that are driving business. However, I'm also hearing and personally feel that it is important to also be inclusive as a community. So I guess the thought I'm having as we're sitting here is that I, I think we still need to consider that community piece. So my thought is, should we list, is to list out in advance for the coming year, the holidays. I mean, we also have a lot of folks in retail on our board, so you, from different aspects of the retail environment.
It's not to interrupt you, Tracy, but I like, Nadez was going to probably talk a little bit about that in her update. And we're going to talk about a calendar and new events that, yeah.
So that might tie together, but I'm saying even just like a list of holidays and occasions that for social media posts, like to say, at a minimum, we are planning, you know, we would plan to do some thematic posts around these holidays. And that way, we could all look at it and see, do we have any glaring omissions or inadvertent omission?
Right, right, right.
So that we're not blindsided, like, how could, oh my gosh, how did we not realize X was coming? Because we ourselves might not be in a demographic that is celebrating X. So again, let's maybe circle back.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And also, once you have a calendar like that, Tracy, you could also reach out to the businesses and say, hey, if you guys are doing any type of promotion or anything special for any of these, let us know. And then, and then you'll have a roster of posts on, on the theme holidays.
Right. Yeah. Okay. I think that.
Looking at the Board of Ed calendar and, you know, as a baseline and then go from there.
Okay, so I think that gives us good direction. There's support for it in a thoughtful way. All right, so I think that's it on marketing. Jumana, unless you had something else, I think we can shift over. That's a good segue into the next item, short-term planning and events, which is Nadez, Jumana, and Jackie.
Okay, short-term planning?
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to kick off. So I've been meeting with the people who volunteer for the short-term planning. And we had a lot of brainstorming and ideas. And the, the the main question that we're trying to answer is, and I know we talked about this in previous meetings, what, what is it that we could, that would make us unique? What is our Explore Shaw Hills, Melbourne identity? And through various discussions, we were wondering whether maybe what makes us special as a community is that we have all this diversity, all these different communities. And one of the volunteers was saying, we're an international village. And maybe this is what makes us unique. And so I'm not saying it's set in stone. This is, this is where our discussions were going. And maybe explore, explore events should reflect that we have this diverse community and we want to celebrate everyone in our community. So that would create a greater sense of support and belongings and a feeling of being welcome. I don't, I think, obviously, our events should be geared towards bringing traffic in town, but not only. I think we also should look into doing community-building events. I think a greater sense of belonging will ultimately be driving more traffic. So if we also build our reputation as an international village that celebrates diversity, we will be attracting traffic from outside as well as being a welcoming place to be. So we looked at having a draft event roster that would have that in mind, if this is what we want to go for. So we'll have a blend of events that would have some commercial purpose only, some building communities, some a bit of both. And I just want to highlight a few ideas of events that we could have for this year, keeping in mind it's a COVID year, so a lot of things are limited. But we could also use for, for the next few years. So we could have events that are culturally driven. So examples are Chinese New Year. Do something around Chinese New Year. That's in February. Something around April for an egg hunt. Something to celebrate the Jewish New Year. And something to celebrate the Festival of Light, Diwali. So those are all, we have strong communities within our community that, that would recognize their traditions and culture in those events. And then in addition to that, have things that are more community-building or calendar-driven, like Valentine's, the February celebrations, where you have President's Day, Black History Month, Founding Day in March, Small Business Saturday, the Holiday Day celebrations. And maybe create something that's ours, our big seed event, which could be date night app or girls' night out or some, something like that. Again, unlikely to happen in this COVID year, but we could still work on it and be ready to go. So for the immediate weeks and months that are coming, we were thinking, so, no, let me just backtrack for a second. Things like Chinese New Year, for example, we have a very strong Chinese association in Melbourne who does a big event and it's, it's got performances and food and it's very well attended. And I'm not suggesting we reinvent the wheel, but I'm suggesting we partner with them and we talk with them and we support their celebration and participate in it. And same with Diwali. So this could be events that would be both community-building as well as commercial. The Chinese New Year this year, I don't know what the celebration is going to look like because of COVID. So we were thinking, maybe in order to celebrate in 2021, we could do something simple, like we explore by fortune cookies with specific fortunes that relates to Melbourne or stores or little facts. And we distribute them to the merchants. And we associate a social media campaign with this, which would be, you know, shop in town. And when you shop in town, you get a fortune cookie. Take a picture, hashtag, tag a friend. And then there will be, you know, a prize at the end, or there will be a draw and there would be, you can win gift cards to a restaurant that again, we would pay for. It wouldn't be a crazy budget. It would engage the restaurants, the merchants, the community. And that's, that would be COVID, that would be COVID compliant. So that would be one, the one thing that we would like to work on for Chinese New Year, which is February the 12th. Valentine's being just on the heels of Chinese New Year, like a couple of days later. The idea was maybe to try to encourage some collaboration between merchants to create Valentine offers. So for example, I, as the book has, could look to partner with a restaurant and a bakery and offer a, something for a price that would have items from different merchants. And maybe we could act as gathering information of who's interested in partnering and then put people together. Try to make it realistic and simple. And for February celebration, we had an idea to do a community, community-building activity. And I'm going to pass the mic to Jackie.
So, thank you, Nadez. Good evening, everybody. So one of the things that we were talking about, kind of circling back to this community, would be there's quite a few holidays in February. We have Black History Month, we have President's Day, we have Valentine's Day, and to run a trivia over 10 or 15 days. Ask one question every day that would be in one of those three or four categories. Have people respond each day, build maybe, you know, I would, or whoever would reach out to the high school to try to get our younger population involved and participating. And everything would run through the, the Instagram page. You know, and, and have, have trivia questions that are, as Nadez would, would say, not Google, immediately Google-able, but something that would, you know, would, 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 it would hopefully somewhere between not well-known and very difficult, somewhere in the middle. So and just run a 10, and whoever got the most questions right over that 10 or 15 days, then we'd have prizes that, once again, that the bid would, would purchase at our merchants' restaurants so that they, they, we would be giving back to them and, and drive the community engagement piece. The only president to have a US patent. Just, you know, just was one question that came to mind. Things that are, that are, that would be over a 10-day period. And it would be another way, an opportunity for us to get more, more eyeballs on the, on the Instagram account and drive community participation. So that, and, and not an expensive way to, to share, to share with our community and, and drive participation. So that was one of the thoughts.
And, and the last thing that I'm going to say is, we've also been particularly focused on looking at how to have our restaurants over the winter, because we, it's going to be a really, really tough winter. And I know, so you talked about the flag initiative, but we were thinking of trying to do something, again, helping the restaurants with the community. And Jackie, again, you want to, you want to go and explain the idea?
Yes. So, so I've already, Nadez and I have kind of just taken a little bit of a straw poll. Spoke to Sean at Boxcar, spoke to Peter Falzo, which is the old Peter, soon-to-be Vinnie's. Spoke to Massimo and Antonio at La Strada. Spoke to, Nadez spoke with Mariachi, and I spoke to the, the people that own the standard. And the idea is that, don't hold me to the dates, but between January 15th and February 15th, if you buy $200 worth of gift cards, you will get 250 of restaurant credit. So the idea is for, to help our restaurants kind of muscle through the winter and for people to drive the engagement. And it's something that we could be involved in terms of our marketing, our promotions and advertising and whoever wanted to participate, whatever residents wanted to, and whatever restaurants in our districts, they would have a list and they would say, yes, they're on board for this promotion. So they, everyone that I spoke to so far was very much on board. I think it's a way for them to get some cash flow during the dark winter months and for us to support our, our merchants. So I think that's something that we can move ahead with, with the board's permission. And, and it's, it's completely voluntary. There may be some that don't, you know, don't want to participate. But certainly, from my little straw poll, across the board, there, there was, there seemed to be interest on, on those that I just mentioned. Any thoughts, suggestions?
Can you just?
Comments?
Very quick, yeah.
Works again. I'm not clear on how you get the credit with the gift card.
Yeah. So you, you, as a, as a, as a individual, we'll use Richard as an example. Richard's going to go to Boxcar. He's going to give Boxcar $200 on his credit card. And Boxcar is going to give him a gift card for $250. And he'll warp off of that.
Does he have to use that 250 in a certain amount of time? Or does he have to wait until a certain amount of time to use the 250?
No, he doesn't have to wait. And, and almost everyone that we spoke to wasn't, wasn't dead-set on a redemption date. They were kind of flexible about it, which is good, because then as residents, you could buy multiple if you weren't concerned that you had to use everything by May 1st. So they were, they were open to a, a, a fluid. And there was, and a, a, a not a hard, a hard stop expiration date. That was, that's the word I was looking for. So.
And that's open to any restaurant in, in the Sid. Deli also, or cafe, or whatever bakery? I mean, who?
Well, it'll be, it'll be for everybody to make their own business decision, because we're just, we're just there as the conduit to, to promote it. And everybody will make, everybody's, you know, food costs or, or, are a little different. So whoever wanted to participate would let, we would reach out to all, I believe it's 28, Marla, correct me if I'm wrong, 28 food-centric businesses?
We have about 35 to 40 in total, but that'll encompass things like bakeries and Okay. you know, the.
So, so, so anyway, we would reach out to those food establishments and they can decide whether or not they'd want to participate. And if they did, then we'll circulate publicity, information, posters. And we'll promote it on our websites, in all our social media channels. Our Work Moms, our Newcomers Club, things of that nature.
Okay.
I've got a quick question. I, I think.
I've got a quick question. I think the gift card may be a good idea. I'm wondering why it's limited to restaurants. So it's about a 25% like benefit, right? You go buy a gift card and you get like a lot more, you get about 25% more, if I'm doing the math right, a little bit. But couldn't we then lower the threshold for like gift shops or other types of businesses in town if they want to participate? Because I know the focus is to help restaurants, which is super good, but if we're gonna have this big promotion, I wonder if other businesses would want to participate and offer that kind of, you know, beneficial kind of gift card, right? If.
Well, we could certainly discuss it with individual merchants, but I, but I, I I think that would be something we could discuss with them if they were interested in participating. I know everyone's profit margin is slightly different, so what would work? If 10% would be great for one merchant, you know, it may be too rich for another merchant. So I, the restaurants that I spoke to were all comfortable with that. And it's, 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 it's a $200 ask, so it's 200 gets you 250. So, and I was just trying to keep it simple and streamlining it for our purposes. But if, if somebody wanted to, we could certainly put it out to all our merchants. And if they wanted to participate and say they're participating, and this is, this is how they're gonna slice it, no pun intended. That would be, that would be, we could certainly discuss that.
No, it's just an idea. I mean, I think it's, you know, a good idea, and I was just thinking ways to help other types of businesses as well.
Steven, do you think, Steven, do you think your bakery would participate? And Andrew, is that something the deli would, would consider? I mean, is that, maybe it should be more expansive that, you know, it could be any of our food-related businesses.
I'm feeling like we shouldn't put our merchant members on this.
Oh, that's true.
On the spot at the meeting. I, yeah, I.
I apologize.
Not our conflict policy. I feel like we need to keep.
I apologize. My fault. I withdraw that.
Right. You know what? Anybody that's interested can certainly circle back to Nadej or I with further questions, and we can certainly hash it out. And we, we can move forward accordingly. Okay?
Can I ask a few other, just questions overall? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, really exciting ideas. I really love the celebrating diversity idea of thematic things around that front. The 200 for 250, I mean, I think simple is key, and that is really key. Pay to, you know, that is really simple, right? Pay 200, get 250. And I agree, if merchants are interested, why not expand? I personally feel confused, and I know we don't have all that much time, so we could also talk further separately. I don't feel as clear an understanding of the theme of the trivia and how that would work and how that, it sounds like it's an idea to try to more help build our social media page. It doesn't feel as directly connected to driving business, driving merchants. I would love to see us, I mean, to me, the whole February timing and Valentine's Day, you know, could we also put things under this umbrella of, you know, loving our town, love Milburn, showing Milburn love for February and like getting the community to just kind of show love for town. So I guess those were a few different thoughts. So again, the, the, yeah, the Chinese New Year tie-in sounds fun, especially with putting things around businesses. The gift certificates makes a lot of sense. I'm also a little concerned about, you know, doing too many things. Like, should we do fewer things and do them really well? But I just, a marketing thought is about this, like showing our town love, like in the month of February. So just want to put that out there.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a, it's a good theme, and we can certainly, you know, promote this, you know, love idea and merchants. But on the trivia, I want to say that I quite strongly feel that we should not be always pushing events that have a commercial aspect. I think it's important to me that we also show that we are part of a community. And sometimes we do things just to get the community together and to get the community engaged. I think more traffic will follow if we become a stronger community. So I think it's also important to have some fun and some trivia with a prize, that it's something simple. And it makes people feel like they, you know, that they have a sense of stronger belonging. I don't know. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I think fun is great. I think it's just a question of the trivia and the fortune cookie Chinese New Year. It's just that they're both going on at the same time. Is it just multiple things at the same time? So just a question. But again, I defer to those working on it to determine the best plan. And also with Marla's help on laying out the marketing calendar and how it all plays out. Also knowing that we, you know, our colleagues at the Chamber, you know, will also be doing seasonal. And I think it is good for us to keep in touch with them, as we often try to do. You know, we all, we're complementary organizations, all working towards some different but many common goals. So just also look at what's going on across the landscape, so that everything is fitting together in a good way.
I mean, I would just say, I think, Nadej, you just said something sort of in passing that I think is actually really important. And I think it's that if you just focus on making really great events and don't necessarily worry about how are we gonna market X business or this or restaurant or whatever, and just think about things that people would enjoy doing or that would make them want to go downtown, the rest follows. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that, because you kind of.
Andrew, you hit on exactly what I was about to say, that I didn't quite, I wasn't getting it in the beginning. But when Nadej just punctuated it, is if you, you know, kind of an if you build it, they will come idea. It made a ton of sense, and I think it's really, that that's the way. You don't always need to be dragged into something. Sometimes it should just be enjoyable and then good things.
Yes, it's a balance, right? It's a balance of all these, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, great.
And Andrew, not just downtown, right? I mean, we have the five districts, and that's part of the consistency of all the five areas.
We're very mindful of this, yes, to always involve all the areas, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's important.
Okay, that's it for me.
Do we, I don't think this is anything we need to take formal action on. I think these are great ideas that we can pursue. And each committee can keep pushing forward with what you started. And looking forward that in the next couple of weeks for February, we'll really have something, some good things in place.
Yeah, I just want to say that if we're gonna move forward with this trip, you know, this February trivia stuff, we'll, we'll begin the question process, you know, maybe the first to the 10th, the first to the 15th. At the end of the 15th, we'll, we'll look at all our, our entries, we'll score them up. And then we'll, we'll talk about, you know, three or four, or four different, different prizes from our local merchants that will purchase. Maybe those that, you know, that are, could use a little bit more Milburn love, or they've reached out to us, or that we reach out to them. We'll, we'll figure out a way that is inclusive and engaging and participatory. So that, and that would, that, that wouldn't necessarily be limited to restaurants. That could be any merchant. Any, any, we could be buying the gift card. So once again, we'll be giving back to the community in that way and building our social media presence. And also addressing not just adults, but I'm really hoping that the high school, you know, will reach out to the communications at the high school to try to get, you know, our students. And maybe this can become, like, you know, after COVID, an event. So you're dressing up as your favorite, you know, president, you're, you're, you're a day of wearing red only for Valentine's Day. Whatever this kind of morphs into down the road, but I think would be, this would certainly be a good way to kind of start. At some point, maybe we tie it into an event at Taylor Park or, or, you know, or in March that we were gonna do last year at Founding Day. So I think this is just a, you know, step one, if you will, of a, of a, of a much more comprehensive program down the road.
Thank you. All right, I think we've covered that pretty, pretty well. Short-term planning and events, anything else to add before we move along? Okay, we're on the very exciting topic next of bylaws. Trace, I don't think we have too much to mine on that.
Well, we were, we don't have news on bylaws per se, but this is where we were gonna talk about the advisory board. And that is actually an exciting topic. So.
That is.
Should I go ahead with that?
Sure, please.
Okay, so I guess we did put that in this section, because the creation of the Advisory Council is, or Advisory Board, is something that's laid out in the ordinance and in our bylaws. And, you know, as a new organization, we've been through, going through the stages of growing and getting ourselves established. And this is something really important for us to now do as a next, next step. As I said, the ordinance and the bylaws look for us to have an advisory board of seven to 15 members. Importantly, that are representative of all five districts. I'll reiterate, though, it's been said many times before that, just not by design, but the way, the way it flowed, it so happened that the people on the board that are merchants and property owners happen to be in downtown. And so therefore, it makes it even more important for this advisory board to be representative of all five districts. So the recommendation of how to move ahead on this, now that we've all had a little time to get up and working with our subcommittees, is that for each of the subcommittees to recommend one to three people based on their interactions, that we re-review the names of the original board interest forms that were submitted. And that if other people stand out based on their demonstrated interest and support towards the, the mission of the CID to date. And if, if there are any gaps, for example, in a specific district, that we put our heads together to do some targeted outreach. The goal would be, and the way the process is laid out in the bylaws is for this first year, we make the recommendation of who the advisory board will be, but it has to go to the township committee for approval. So the goal would be to have a recommended slate of people that we would vote on at our February meeting. And it would then go to the township committee for approval.
And Tracy, what would the advisory board do, just if you could touch on it, that's different than the Board of Trustees?
Well, the advisory board is helping inform the Board of Trustees. Importantly, again, the perspective of the different CID districts. Advisory Board members can be part of subcommittees and be volunteering, and we would look for them to be doing that. So they would, you know, kind of help us supersize our efforts and our impact by being involved. Those are the two main things I'm aware of. Michael, do you want to add any further context based on?
That was it. I just thought it was important, whoever's listening to.
Yes. So any thoughts?
And it's for people to, more people and a, from a greater swath of the community.
A quick question. Does the township, does the committee need to approve the advisory board? Is that what I heard?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Actually, I think that's for the first year.
Yeah, only the first year.
I think that's for the first year. I have to say, I don't have the bylaws in front of me. Michael, I don't know if you know.
Coincidence.
We can follow up and.
I was just curious.
I'm pretty sure it's just the first year, though.
Okay. But we can follow up to confirm the exact parameters. For this year, for sure, the process was laid out that the, the CID Committee, Board of Trustees, would make the recommendation for the advisory board, and the advisory board would be approved by the township committee. That's definitely the process for this year, that I could say with.
The action item for, for, between now and our next meeting would be to get names to, of people we've been dealing with and put them forward.
Yeah.
So advisory board member is either a business owner or a property, commercial property owner in any of those districts?
Or a resident. It's not limited. It's not limited. But I think the vision is we would want to have at least one merchant or property owner from each district. I think it's fair to say that, but it wouldn't be limited to only merchants and property owners.
Okay, good. Thank you for bringing that up. Our next topic is recruitment, human capital. Who's?
This isn't, this is, in addition to the advisory board, this is really good news and exciting. So after a lot of searching, and we have a candidate that we are very excited to discuss and propose that we hire his consulting firm. So his name's Ryan Gleason. He owns and operates a consulting firm. And he comes to us with great, not only a ton of experience, but also great personality. All the board members, I think, have interviewed him at least once. I know I've met with him a couple of times. And he's gonna, he's gonna provide all of our executive director duties here for the CID. And we'll have an office in Town Hall here. As we've discussed previously, we'll have office hours for anybody in the public can meet with him or talk with him. And so we're super excited. So very, very briefly, he comes from, he was the Downtown Denville Business Improvement, the bid for Denville. He was the executive, executive director there for several years, starting in July 2017. And what's, what's unique about him is he was there for building the bid from its inception. So he knows all of the growing pains, and he led that bid from the very beginning. So he's seen all the issues we've been struggling with and has, comes to us with some great ideas as well. Sorry. Sorry to talk in this thing.
I think you could take it off, if you, if you're comfortable in your, in your.
For a few minutes, I will. He also, he has experienced for many years as Director of Government Affairs at the Staten Island Chamber of Commerce. And one interesting bit of, bit of experience, which I haven't really asked him about, is for the New York football, for the Giants, he is locker room staff. He's the, he's part of the locker room staff for the visiting teams. But so we reviewed and created a consulting services agreement with his firm. And I know we posted this on, on, on our internet website, or internet website. I can just go through a few of the highlights of the professional services agreement. We posted a summary of it. It's gonna be dated as of February 1, so assuming we get approval tonight. We want to start them off very quickly. In the initial one-year term, with renewing a couple of years, we've negotiated rates for the first three years. First year would be $7,200 per month during the initial term. That goes up slightly, year two, $7,500, year three, 78, 75 per month during those, if we choose to renew and if we choose to renew. So we've kind of locked in our pricing moving forward for the first three years. We can terminate at any time upon 30 days' notice, so it's flexible for both of us. He can also walk away with 60 days' notice, so we get a little more time to try to find a replacement. But like I said, he'll be here 35 to 40 hours per week, working for the CID, for downtown, for business promotion. Four days a week, he'll be in Town Hall. One day a week, he can work remotely. But he'll also establish those posted public hours to meet with the community, meet with people, talk to people and get out. And you, in our bylaws, if you've read them, we have a whole laundry list of tasks associated, identifying in all the businesses, developing vacancy lists and working with realtors. All of those things are part of his duties in the agreement. So lined up very nicely. I don't know, does anyone on the board have any questions? I know I'm super excited to have, have him hopefully on board.
Yeah. Steven, may I make, can I add something? I was also involved in interviewing Mr. Gleason. And I will tell you that I'm struck by how knowledgeable he is in terms of grants, state money, just because he's had this experience. And I think, I think he's gonna offer leadership in terms of, in terms of getting grants for Milburn just because of his knowledge. And I think he's gonna be a super addition to, you know, to this organization and to the township. And, and he's also, you know, he's, he is a great personality, and he's gonna offer great leadership for us.
Yeah, no, thank you. Do you think we should bring him on, or would you like to?
I don't know if he'd like to introduce himself. I know he's in the, in the virtual audience.
Yeah. Yeah, Ryan, if you can hear us, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words? There he is.
Hey, Ryan.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Ryan.
Thank you very much, Stephen, Richard, Jackie, everyone who said such nice things. I'm very, very, very excited to be given the opportunity should the recommendation move forward. As Stephen said previously, I was the Executive Director of Downtown Denville and really saw what it takes to create a Business Improvement District from the ground up, you know, everything from creating the bylaws, getting the subcommittees together, creating the marketing plan and the strategic plan, and being hyper-focused on creating value for the merchants and the property owners, and also the residents in Denville. I'm really hoping that I can bring some of that experience to Milburn Short Hills, work with all of you, all of the subcommittees, all of the merchants, to really do two things. And the first and most important is helping our businesses survive COVID-19 and getting us through this, you know, horrendous, horrendous year for businesses in particular. And the second thing I would really want to focus on is creating a long-term strategic plan for the CID and for Milburn Short Hills, so that we can see, you know, a really prosperous community, you know, not just a year from now, but five years and 10 years from now. So that's really going to be my focus if I'm brought on. I'm really excited. You know, I've already met a bunch of you and looking forward to meeting the rest and all of the merchants and property owners who are going to be involved. So I thank you very much again for the opportunity.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Being here. And it was no pressure. You had nothing but accolades.
I know, right?
Okay, I'm just going to take them all. Take them all, okay. Great. He's been moved away. Okay. Did anybody have any other comments or questions? We, the intention would be to take action on, on appointing Ryan as Executive Director through his, through, through his company.
I have a question, if, if you'll entertain me for a minute. I feel like I would be a little bit remiss if I, the allotted hours, 35 to 40 hours a week. I mean, just talking about how much stuff that needs to get done. I feel like for what we're going to spend, we should be getting at least 40 hours. So I just, I look at it from the perspective of the folks in the community who are operating a small business, and a lot of them are working, you know, 80 hours a week and not making close to that. So I just, I don't know, is there like, is that 35 hours of four days a week is really what the position is, or?
No, no. The position is, is, is five days a week full-time. And, and Ryan is aware that we're going to have these evening meetings. The 35 to 40 is, is the minimum. And we, we engaged in a, this way, so that we were not, you know, we were not in a, we were hiring him as a professional, as a full-time professional. If he's got calls to make or emails to send at night, you know, the 35 to 40 hours is, is kind of the way we would look at the visibility hours. I think, I think that it's whatever it is to get, we're hiring him for his professionalism, Andrew, and I understand your question, your concern. But I think he knows, he knows what the job takes and, and that, and that's, and we're confident that he's going to be able to execute.
And Andrew, I'll also say, you know, we thought, you know, I thought of that, and I, and I respect, you know, that, that question. But I will tell you that in all of his other positions, he's, he's been a consummate professional, you know, upstanding. I don't want to say too much, you know, publicly, but, but he was very well-liked in his other position. He puts all of his chips into, into what he's doing, totally a consummate professional. And the 35 to 40 hours was, was, I think, just more for contract, you know, just, just for to have like a basis. But he's agreed to come to our meetings, take phone calls. He will do whatever it takes to get the job done. And I, and I'm very confident of that.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I spoke with him, and I, I mean, I'm going to vote yes. I think he's the right guy. It was just, when I saw the number of hours with the salary, I was like, you know, I think the community is going to expect a lot of us. So I just, 30, I looked at it, and I was like, 35 hours just doesn't seem like it would be enough to really get things rolling. But now that I understand, you're saying that's more like the visible hours, and he'll be handling other things as well. It's just, there's a lot to do. So I was just kind of, that was my thought process.
And Andrew, I would throw in the grants, right? His experience with obtaining grants for the good of Denville and his prior, his knowledge of what grants are available and how to apply for them and get them, I think will far outweigh the, his, his costs. That, that's also, his experience there is phenomenal.
And like I said, I'm, I, I think he's the great guy.
They're all good points. Yeah, absolutely valid questions. Yep.
That's it. I'm done.
Thanks, Andrew. No, I think you're right. I think the expectation is demands will be high. The visibility will be high. And, you know, we all work more than 35, 40 hours a week. Whether you get paid for it or not is a different story. So it's, you know, I think it's, the idea is, the key is, I think he can be treated as a professional. And I think if the job requires additional, I think it'll get done.
Yep.
At this point, I'm hopefully confident that that won't be an issue. But I'm glad you brought that up, Andrew, because it's, you know, that's a touchy subject, so.
Yeah, well, I always just think, sometimes when I'm sitting here, like when I was in the, you know, at the meetings, like I wish somebody said something about X. So sometimes.
Yeah, I don't think it's like a clock-in, clock-out kind of idea. This is the baseline, so. I appreciate that. Does anybody else want to discuss this? All right. If, I'd like to take a roll call vote on this, because I think this is an important one. And it's appointing somebody. So this would be a, a motion to appoint Ryan Gleason. It's actually, we're actually hiring RG, or retaining RG District Services LLC. But he will be the sole, the sole individual serving as our Executive Director. So I'd like a motion. Can I, can I just ask you not to do that? Thanks. Can we have a motion to appoint Ryan Gleason as Executive Director for the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can I have a roll call for this?
Yeah, Jomani Colligan?
Yes.
Tracy Levine, me, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadja Nicole?
Yes.
Michael Parlavakio? Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Stephen Weiner?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to Ryan. We look forward to getting you to work February 1, and really hitting the ground running. So, if I can just take a step aside, Mr. Fell, I hate to do that. I just, it's a little distracting. And to your point, I know Stephen put together an executive summary of the agreement, and once we have it all signed, it'll be a public document and available for complete review. Yep, good point. All right. All right, that's good. That was, so, you know, a lot more interviewing than I expected. But, you know, I think we got the right person for sure. Do we have, I think that's it, under recruitment. So we're on to business development and advocacy. And we have now Mayor Emeritus.
Mayor Emeritus, so.
And Deputy Mayor Wasserman.
Yeah, so I'm just going to mention that their Business Advocacy Subcommittee will be meeting once Ryan is on board. He's had tremendous experience working directly with businesses. One of the things that we talked about is, is sort of a template to streamline processes for potential new businesses, provide demographics to potential new businesses, all these kinds of things that some of our merchants have shared with us that, about an arduous process, looking at our zoning, all these things that are part of this Business Advocacy Subcommittee. So we're going to, we, we're just going to wait and invite Ryan to help us navigate that. And I, and I'm confident that meeting will take place in very short order. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Wasserman to talk about, oh, you want to mention who's on the kids' side? Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to, I'll take, yeah, I'd like to mention that, I don't know if I can pronounce everybody's name.
Okay, here.
You want to just read?
Yeah, sure. So right now, the Business Advocacy Subcommittee, and we're, for those that are listening and want to participate, this, this is fluid. We, we're certainly, would be welcoming other, other members. Victoria Vainberg, Carl Burwell, Victoria Vainbergs, who's a resident. Carl Burwell is the owner of Green Passion. Stephanie Malios is a Realtor. Carissa Riley is a Realtor. Those are both residents. Soima Jarman is also a resident. Marla is our marketing specialist. And Todd Crispino, who's the owner of Milburn 145, Milburn 45 Training, is also on this Subcommittee.
Right, right. And, and everybody on the committee is very passionate. And, you know, I think the other thing that the, that the, that, that I'm still going to call Jackie our mayor, or ex, her, her. Anyway, the other thing that I think is really important that's come up many times in our, in our meetings, is that we want to make Milburn more inviting for merchants that are looking to, to invest here. And, and we have some work to do. And I think that the committee is really focused on trying to lower barriers, whether it's zoning or paperwork, or, you know, whatever it may be. But we really want, you know, the bid to assist businesses to open in town and to, and to work on vacancies. And, and some of this, and some of this, which we'll work with Ryan on, has to do with meeting with commercial property owners and trying to work on vacancies in all the districts. And I think that that's, that's going to be coming, and that's going to be part of, you know, part of the Subcommittee's mission. And I just, and again, I do want to thank everybody who serves on that Subcommittee, because they're all very passionate and dedicated to the township.
Richard, you were going to also mention here the Milburn Business Relief Fund.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was going to, I was going to get to that after this. So, so in terms of the Milburn Relief Fund, you know, one of the things that, that's really important as we, as we go forward with our mission, is to try to take care of our businesses during this, during this crazy time. We're heading, you know, January, February, March. These are going to be very, very difficult months ahead, you know, for our small businesses, you know, restaurants, what, you know, whatever, you know, whatever the businesses are. A lot of people are under a lot of financial pressure right now to pay their rent, you know. And, and I think it's, I think it's, it's a very important part of our mission, you know, to, to assist those businesses, right, you know, in the near future, not only long-term, but kind of like right now, in terms of what we're doing. So with that being said, in, you know, when talking to Ryan, which, which grants are really one of his expertises, we thought it would be really important to, in the immediate future, look at a Business Relief Fund. And our thinking is that the, that the Milburn Business Relief Fund will be a program that aims to provide businesses, and, you know, within the Explore Milburn Short Hills Special Improvement Districts, with grants that help pay for eligible expenses incurred as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The program will aim to promote continued recovery and revitalization of Milburn's business community, with special emphasis on supporting vulnerable small businesses. The program will be funded by grassroots fundraising efforts, as well as an allocation from the Milburn Short Hills, as well as from our budget. We do have a line item for it. Grantees must, must comply with, with special rules that we're going to propose. And I think our thinking is, is just because Ryan is coming on board right now, is to present a formal proposal at our next meeting. So the next meeting, we'll certainly have a formal proposal in terms of what, you know, what we envision. And we'll make sure that it's posted, you know, well before the, the meeting, so everybody can see it. But we hope to present it at our next meeting with, with Ryan's input and expertise. And in addition to that, so that's one thing, in addition to that, as I mentioned before, you know, Ryan, Ryan, you know, part of Ryan's background is also in grant writing. And we're also hoping to tap into some, some state grants that, that, that are out there that we just, that we, that we should be applying to. The other thing that I'll mention is that it was in the news in the last week that Montclair, you know, I don't, you can't really see this, but Montclair just got a $400,000 grant, you know, which is being distributed to 114 of their businesses. This happened, this just happened this month, with the average grant award being about $3,500. And, and, you know, if we could, you know, if we can make available any of these state, state grants, it would be an incredible achievement. So, so those are the two things that, that we're looking at. And I hope to have a formal proposal for our board to consider at the next meeting.
That's great. Thank you, Richard. I think that's, that's good news. I'm, I hope everybody listening thinks that's good news. It was certainly brought up by more than one of our public speakers earlier about getting really direct assistance to our, to our businesses. And this sounds like a great way to accomplish that.
Yeah, and we'll be working really hard on it, and we'll be, you know, seeking community input and, and engagement. And, and I know how generous our residents are, and we're going to do whatever we can to help our businesses in the near future, you know, now.
Thank you. Okay. Our next discussion point, Marketing Social Media Update, from our marketing consultant, Marla Itzken.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
We can hear you, we just can't see you.
She is, you are divinely now, Marla.
Excellent news. Thank you. And there I am. Hi, everybody. I'm always glad I get to close the meeting. I feel like I should be doing a song and dance and have a hat. It, it was just such an exciting, exciting thing for me to be part of the holiday season in Milburn Short Hills. The energy that I saw from all the retailers, from the restaurants, it was just, it was, it was great. So I hope that despite, of course, the conditions everybody's working under, that it was a successful season for everybody. So I'm going to share my screen as best I can. Zoom is not my favorite. Let's see. Here we go. Screen sharing, both slow, bear with me. All right, we'll look at it this way. Okay, so here it goes. Funny, Tracy asked me if I'd be okay, and I was set up. I'm like as set up as I can be. Funny, Tracy asked me if I'd be okay and I was set up. I'm like as set up as I can be. There we go. That's a presentation. And I'm going to minimize, I don't need to look at me. Okay. So we had a lot going on this holiday season. You've heard some of this earlier in the meeting, so I won't over reiterate. But what really impressed me was that with the very quick turn, once again, I'm bringing as much promotion as we could to the downtown and to our other four Special Improvement District areas. I was thrilled with the amount of people who wanted to come on board. So first, we had the winter, the winter window decorating. And we had some great student artists who are managed by Arvino and Art Advisory Council and One River School, who got together with our merchants and designed their windows for them. And then what we did to help promote that was we had a photo contest and a scavenger hunt. We promoted each of those windows on social media with the hashtag Winter Windows 2020. Additionally, around town, we expanded the parameters of what we could do decoration wise by adding more of those holiday toy soldiers into areas outside of the downtown. And the same thing with adding some additional holiday lighting outside of the downtown. So that was a nice add that we did for the holiday season. The gift basket giveaway was our big promotion. And I know we talked about this a little previously. And at the time, we had, you know, we were about 20 merchants, we were at the, you know, $800 a basket range. Well, when it came down to business, we had 26 merchants representing all five areas. And each of these baskets was worth $1,000. People entered mostly in person, I would say it was like 98% in person, which is how we wanted it. We also offered an opportunity to enter through social media. We had over 800, I'm guessing, it's getting counted as we speak, entries for this promotion. And we are taking those email addresses right now and compiling our list. And as of now, our three winners have all picked up their baskets. And if you haven't already liked us and followed us on Instagram and Facebook, you will see how not only happy they were to get this amazing prize, but the amazing things they had to say about our community, our retailers, our restaurants. They, they couldn't have been happier or nicer, they were thrilled. So this is the list of the participating merchants. And you could see we have every type of business from every area of our town. It was a very nice representation. I'd like to see this triple next year. Why not? And I don't even think we have to wait for next year. And I'm, what I hope is that if our retailers and our property owners are watching, add to this list. If you're not here, you should be. So social media was very big and important for us this year. We're, we're just getting started. And we just launched in mid-November with, you know, our first, first post. So we are trying to grow fast and furious, not only for recognition of what we are as an organization, but because we get to amplify all the merchants' messages to the community. So we've been promoting our initiatives, which of course is a reflection of our retailers, the winter windows, the gift basket giveaway and the scavenger hunt photo contest. And we're also working on building a following. So when we start having in-person events in the future, that's how we're going to get people and get the word out. So just to give a snapshot, there are a million statistics that you could pull on Facebook and Instagram. And just to keep it simple, here, I've been looking at not only, of course, the work I've been doing, how many posts, how many stories, but how we're building our followers. So just for perspective here, I have for the past, call it month, in big and in black, that's what we did. And then just to give you some background, I put down what we last reported at the meeting. So we are growing and we will continue to grow. I could talk about percents, but we're at that wonderful stage where, you know, I could pat myself on the back because you're talking about thousand percent changes. So for now, we'll just leave the materials like this. If you haven't liked us, if you haven't followed us, please do so because you're missing out. And this is just a visual snapshot of what we have going on. I have this thing for dogs. So if, if some of our retailers are posting pictures of dogs, there's a whole little story section on Instagram just for that. You'll see in the middle here, we have a whole series on, on the windows. And then, of course, the holiday season and then New Year's. And just trying to develop a theme like this one was sparkle, just based on what I was seeing from the retailers. And in the post itself, it, it said who the retailers were that were featured in this post. And then, of course, there's so many more than that. So now, there's some ideas I'm brewing where it's easy enough for us to have a consistent look and feel for a particular item. So for example, on the left, we are going to have new businesses coming to play. And as you could see, there's kind of a consistent field for, sorry, consistent feel for what that is. We've Vinnie's, not just a welcome, but kind of a welcome back. We have some quotes that we got from some of our community members in relation to the baskets. They were so good. I have about 15 of them and ready to rock and roll and fill them out into our social media. I also want to be able to feature, I have a whole idea to feature our merchants and have a whole series of Meet the Merchants. And then low and behold, I saw some of our retailers were already posting some of that. So I'm incorporating some of that into it because they're people behind our businesses, not only the owners, not only the tenants and the, but they're the people who work and you develop relationships with as you shop. So this was an example of a collaboration, this got touched on earlier. For Winter Walk, we wanted to give people a list of not only places they could just walk to from Taylor Park, but of course, of course, other restaurants that, a short drive on their way in or out of the area. We didn't want them missed as well. So we worked on this with the Chamber of Commerce and with Winter Walk and just kind of created this list. And each of us peppered it in our social media as well as it getting distributed to those listservs that people look to when they're looking for things to do. Okay, and then, of course, this is stuff that was talked about earlier, but other items we've been working on over the holiday season is we want to get this website developed and up and running. And I'm very excited to be working on that. And anytime we hear about a grant or now that Ryan's on, will be on board, will be having more of this, we want to get that communication to people who are eligible for those grants so that we can make sure that they are in the loop and they are able to, you know, partake. It's not something that we are doing ourselves. So that is marketing. Look back on the holidays. So does anybody have any questions for me, anything that my marketing co-chairs or event chairs want to add in?
I, it was very good, thank you. I don't know if anybody had anything to add to that. That was terrific, Marla, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone?
No, no, it's good.
Okay. All right, thanks, Marla. I'm going to move on to the.
Thank you, Marla.
Thanks, Marla.
spreadsheet time, Stephen.
Now we say finance the last.
Yeah, now we say.
Finance. Sure. So first, before we get in the budget, the draft budget. Both this document, again, posted online, this is just the summary of our expenses from December 3rd, 2020 through January 11. Expenses for, for Marla's marketing firm, as well as a little bit of reimbursement. Facebook, $310 for social media promotions over the holiday period as well. That's to drive traffic and everything. So again, these, these expenses are posted, if there's any questions on the board. But more interestingly is our initial draft budget for, for 2021. And this was also posted, this is proposed, this is our first cut edit. So certainly open for further discussion among the board members here, of course. But just very generally, I can walk you through the proposal. We, $204,000 was the amount budgeted from the township, that's kind of where we started. Carryover from last year, unexpended, unexpended funds, a little over, almost $12,000, $11,839. And then we did put in $5,000 event income. Just as a little background, what informed some of these numbers were the 20, was the 2018 budget, which is the last budget from the Downtown Melbourne Development Alliance budget. So these didn't come out of thin air. We were looking at what was budgeted in 2018 and brought it forward to this year. So that was some of our context of what we were looking at. So overall, that's why Farmers Market, we put in 5,000 estimated budget income, given our planned relaunch and expansion of the Farmers Market. On the expense side, you'll see, as was mentioned during the public comment period, the two largest expenses are personnel, which we think are critically important for the success of our CID and worth every penny of investment. But $80,200 is budgeted for Mr. Gleason's time. And again, that's at that $7,200 per month rate that I had mentioned earlier. And then Marla's consulting firm, that's budgeted 24, 25 hours per week at 2750 per hour. And, and that's the rate in our arrangement with Marla's firm. The bucket around marketing.
Stephen, excuse me for one second. Do you want me to by chance share this on the screen? Would that be helpful for people?
You certainly could. Yeah, that might be helpful.
Okay, I'm going to do that. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, and if I'm going into too much detail, let me know. I'm just trying to hit highlights.
No, I think you're fine.
Okay. We have a marketing social media budget bucket, approximately $9,300 for email service, and that's a vaulted email service so that all emails are being retained. Website design, we talked about the RFP, the, the approval of New Frontier, that's part of this budget. That's the $5,000 for, for website design. And hosting support expenses. There's a line item in here for $7,500 for physical advertising and marketing. Because the feeling is, is not everything is social media or online, that there may be, and we think there will be a need for the printing of large signs when we close, like net, over the summer, if we close Main Street again, like we did last, last summer. We have a banner that says Explore Melbourne Short Hills. Or if we choose to place like physical advertisements or announcements in, in, in the item or, or local publications. So that's what that expense item is, is, is there for. General operating expenses, like in 2018, we think it's prudent to have a legal reserve set up. Of course, accountant and auditing expenses, insurance, IT support, that's, that's what that bucket is. Then in programs, now this was our best estimate at this point. Obviously, we're going to, this is going to be evolving and discussed at future meetings. The COVID grant program, that is the line item Richard had referenced earlier. We have $10,000 in there. And actually, in consultation with Mr. Gleason and others, that, that shows the commitment to getting this grant program or the assist, I guess we haven't really named it yet, but the Business Relief Fund Initiative off the ground. So that's our commitment to any, any startup expenses, but possible, you know, matching grants. We, we don't know, but certainly it's important and a priority for us to get that launched successfully. Then we have a series of events. We were just initially kind of thinking them seasonally, spring, summer. We know Farmers Market is there, we know Halloween was super successful. So we have a separate line item for that. Winter Walk contribution, I heard some comments, we certainly could discuss further. But though that, you know, again, there's flexibility in here depending on what programs we have when they're launched, et cetera, we just, we were proceeding with imperfect information at this point. Visual improvements, really important section, right? So in 2018, that bucket was about a little over $17,000. We have it at about $26,000 because that is the key to bringing together all the five districts, right? If it's a look and feel, if it's a common shopping experience or dining experience. And it, it could be a variety of things. It's more lighting that's consistent across the, the districts. It's plantings, additional plantings, it's coloration. We haven't worked out all the details, but it's streetscape. And I think that's very important for all this disparate districts that, that they, you know, benefit from this type of improvement. That's a quick summary. I don't know if anybody on the board has any questions or.
Just to get into what you, I think correctly termed as important in the visual improvements. And that would be something we do in conjunction with the township. So we might buy or, or listen to what we think a good design would be. And maybe we make a purchase and the township, you know, if there are trees or something, township will, will plant. So, you know, we will get some bang for our buck out of that $26,000.
That's right.
Very important.
I have a couple of questions, but I'm happy to have others go first and then I can see if mine are still outstanding.
Well, you know, I, I'd also like to mention that, you know, with Marla and DPW, this holiday season really, really worked hard to, you know, to put out extra lights. And we had those toy soldiers. And, and I, I think it made a big difference. And I think that especially around holidays, it's very important, you know, that the, the town look great, that it look inviting, you know, for, you know, for, for our merchants, you know. And I think that that's, that's part of, that, that's part of a good strategy. So I'll just throw that out.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Tracy, did you want to jump in?
I can, I wanted to, yeah, just see if others had thoughts. Well, I guess one is, first of all, thanks for the work on this. And as we all said, we're, we're still an evolving organization. So it sounds like this is an initial budget. And then there's an opportunity to make updates. However, it does sound like there's quite a process for the review at the township level. And that, so therefore, I think we do need to be very thoughtful, even at this point. So I guess I have a couple of questions, and I think there were some good questions raised earlier as well. I was a little confused also about the events kind of delineating spring versus summer, but then not having that much in for the holiday time. And I agree, I also feel that it's, it's too preliminary to commit to Winter Walk. I don't think we know what that's going to be next year. We don't have our strategy. So I would rather see us list the events more generally in terms of, you know, events across the five districts, rather than splitting them out by season or having a separate line item for Winter Walk or Halloween. That just seems a little too micro at this point. I would like to see us, we had had some, some amount of money in our initial end of 2020 budget that we haven't gotten to do yet in terms of market research. And while I know we have some wonderful members of our marketing Subcommittee willing to donate their time, for example, some initial focus groups, we have someone volunteering their time for that. There may be other research that we need to do among merchants. We all talk about how important it is that we're serving our constituents. So I'd like to see us allocate some money for market research. The visual improvements, I agree that, and I don't have enough basis of what these things actually cost. And yes, I do think having visual consistency will really help. But that does feel like a lot of money there. And I'd like to see us putting more direct towards business. I guess a question, this is coming from the corporate world, I don't know what the practice is here. But can there also be like a reserve line or a line that's some reasonable percentage that's not specifically assigned to things that the, would need to be voted on? But some small funds to allow for things that may come up or just a reserve for unexpected things, for example. I think those are my, my thoughts. I don't know what others think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, oh, I was gonna say, I certainly think we need flexibility. We need flexibility because we, we don't know all the different programming, right? So I totally agree with you on, on that point. I don't know, Alex, if, it's hard to bring it to the Township Committee because this is just kind of our initial allocations, right? And then the TC is going to review and approve this. And to the extent we have.
Hey, Stephen, I was just thinking, can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, that perhaps with the.
That perhaps with the line items, I I think as we evolve and as as our organization grows, these line items will become more detailed, and we should actually be adding more line items to our budget. But maybe, you know, I kind of agree with some of the things that Tracy said, like for the operating expense. Sorry, not in the app, in the programs that we really haven't even set anything in stone yet. So maybe those should be less specific. I I don't know. And yeah, but I want to just say, I don't know the pricing on these things, but I do agree that we need to budget for signage. If we want to brand ourselves, I think we do need some sort of signage around the five districts so that we it's another way to tie in all five districts and represent explore in all five districts. So I do think it's important to have a line item for signage and things like that.
But that's that's there, Gemma, under.
No, no, I I'm just reiterating that I think it needs to be there. I don't know that it what it is. I'm just reiterating that should be there. Yeah, yeah. No, I see it.
I I agree about the about the holiday year end programming that was brought to our attention. So maybe, maybe, maybe we allocate a little bit at less at a summer event and a little bit more for our year end. But like you said, like everyone is saying, it's all fluid and we don't know yet.
Or do we just say it's $40,000 in the events? Fuck it, just the event.
Yeah, possibly. I mean, I I agree, like for winter, for the for the Small Business Saturday, for instance, we really, really need to ramp that up for this year. I mean, I don't, you know, I think that's a huge event for small businesses. And a lot more can be done in that areas and also a great kickoff for the holiday season. With regards to winter walk, I don't know if we need to commit to a certain amount at this point. I agree with that. You know?
Yeah, it just seems a little preliminary. Again, we said a big deliverable for Ryan, working with Marla and everyone is good. And with Nadej, to her good point, is laying out this full year plan. Can I just ask a process question? I guess it's to Alex slash Michael. So this will be, it's in our bylaws that we need to present an annual budget to the township committee at the beginning of the year. But then what's, I don't recall if this is in the bylaws or what's the check, what happens after that? Are there certain checkpoints that we're going back with updates or that we still then need additional approvals? Can Alex talk to that perhaps briefly or Michael?
Alex is making his way over. Yeah, Tracy, I just wanted to get on a mic so so people could hear me. So yes, there is a there is a process, you know, obviously, this year 2021 is a unique year for the Explore Melbourne Short Hills in that the budgeted amount for the Cid is coming from the township's budget. However, the process should still be followed the same way in which the Cid presents initially its budget to the township committee. It'll follow the same budget process as a municipal budget in which that it is then advertised for a public hearing at a subsequent meeting in which it will be presented again. There will be a public hearing, and at that time, the township committee would be asked to approve or amend the budget. And then can, once approved, then those funds would not necessarily in this particular year be ready to go because it will follow with the municipal budget and its approval. And again, that's why the Cid was a part of the 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 temporary, the temporary budget for the municipality. But in subsequent years in 2022, when there is a an assessment associated with it, then there will be additional steps to that in which a a list of those being assessed and the amount of that assessment needs to be certified and passed by resolution by the committee as well and and letter sent out to those to those properties. So that is the process.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
And and I just, I'll just answer the question regarding the line items. You know, generally speaking, it's it's there's flexibility within your within your larger buckets to move to probably move money around or use money. If you say, oh, well, this is only going to cost us this amount of money, and we have additional funds and, you know, say events that you could use for the COVID program. But you don't want to get in into moving dollars between those larger buckets.
So in other words, within programs, just because I'm thinking about like a municipal budget, if you stay within programs that allocated number, so if it's roughly 50,000, however you use it in programs, you don't require, I don't even know if we have to get into transfers and things like that, as long as it's within that.
Right. And I think a good addition to that draft budget would be to subtotal those those expense categories.
So for example, also, Alex, in in 2022, we're not going to have the website startup costs associated so that that so that money can then be allocated elsewhere.
Yeah, I mean, that's a separate, that's going to be a separate budget altogether. Certainly, your revenue streams are going to be different, too. You won't, you don't know if you're going to have the $11,900 that's going to roll over or not. So so it's just going to be a different a different budget. But I think it's important that the the Cid followed the 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 process allocated in the ordinance this year despite even even though an assessment is not taking place.
Got it.
I mean, I I don't, I can't. That's that's it's not being approved tonight, that's why.
Well, at what point does it need to go to the township committee? What's the? What's the next step?
So again, I think I think the answer to that is, you know, as soon as practical. Only because it will, you know, you you want the township committee's approval sort of in line in conjunction with as the municipality and the township goes through its budget process.
So what's, I guess I'm just trying to understand. If if we're not approving this tonight, then our next scheduled meeting is not for another month? If we were to be revised and re-reviewed, we'd have to call a special meeting?
I mean.
Tactically understand, or do we have enough information that we could agree on some minor changes tonight and then approve it to go to the township committee?
I I I think, you know, again, you know, just understanding the 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 municipal process, too, is that there's nothing that would preclude you from having this introduced at the second meeting in February for the municipality, which is March 20 or February 23rd, which would give you, which would give a two week period in between the approval at the meeting for the Cid on in February. I just, you know, with these things, certainly, I I think, you know, I understand, I think you just want to, everybody's learning about it for the first time. You may have may receive some additional comments and questions, but also you're getting the executive director that's coming on. Certainly, you want his buy in and his support of that budget as well. And then, you know, just making sure that 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 the municipality is prepared to receive your budget and things like that.
What's the what's the township, the municipality schedule for a budget?
So, yeah, so the the municipality's schedule is going to be that it has to be introduced. The municipal budget has to be introduced by March 30th, and it has to be adopted by April 30th. So that's sort of the timeframe that the Special Improvement District tries as well.
So if we if we fine tune this a little bit, have some more discussion on it, subtotal it, maybe move some things around, and then bring it up for action for for our internal action, which would really be just a referral to the township committee. We could do that in February and stay in line with what the with the municipalities.
Right.
So Tracy, does that answer the question? I think that will be our.
Yep. Michael, please speak up. We can't hear you.
All right, I'm sitting all the way back. So I think what our what our strategy, not our strategy, our plan is is fine tune this a bit, have it back for our February meeting with an idea to take action to refer to the township committee. And it will be on the right schedule for municipal budget approval.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
And in the meantime, don't we get a some temporary funding for the first quarter or something from the township?
Twenty six.
That's correct.
It's already happened.
Right.
Already.
It was already, it was already approved.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Take into account everything we.
Absolutely.
Discuss today.
Great.
Alex. Okay. Thank you, Stephen, for putting that much time into that. I know how much time you've put into this. Okay, we spoke about the draft budget and expense review. Let's go to board comments. If anybody has any comments to wrap us up.
Yeah, I have a comment. I just wanted to put that there. You know, we talked about the Women's Center for Entrepreneurship, who is running mostly free classes for small businesses. I just wanted to highlight, they have a whole schedule online, but I wanted to highlight a couple that maybe people might be interested in. On January the 20th, from four to five, they have a class called COVID Funding and Grants, and it's a Zoom class. And on January the 26th, between one and two P M., they have a class called Applying for PPP Forgiveness. This is information that you can find on their website and you can register. And there's a lot more classes, but I thought those two ones were interesting.
Thanks, Nadej.
What website or is there a way to post that? Or maybe it's already posted or something?
I can I can send you the link where you click and register to the classes. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send it to Tracy.
Okay, good.
And we can actually, that would be good for Marla to include in upcoming newsletter to the merchants.
Yes.
No, that's great.
Could you, could you just repeat it, Nadej? So in case.
Schedule of classes here, there's loads more stuff, and I think some might have a fee, but not, most of them are free. January 20th, four to five, COVID Funding and Grants. January the 26th, one to two, Applying for PPP Forgiveness. Those are Zoom meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
In in the spirit of community, I also want to mention that the food pantry is still looking, we're still looking for dry food. You know, we're servicing, I think we're servicing over a dozen families. And if anybody has has dry food, I think where intake is still in town hall at the entrance to town hall. And and it's, you know, there's few things more important than feeding hungry mouths, especially our neighbors. I also want to thank everybody for for such hard work. I'm sitting in meetings with people and I want our residents to know that people are working really hard, you know, for the benefit of our businesses. And I also want to congratulate Ryan on on his contract, and I look forward to, we all look forward to working with him.
Michael, I wanted to share a couple of thoughts.
Sure, please.
So I I'm very honored to be the secretary of our organization, and it definitely puts me at the hub of a lot what's going on. So I wanted to share a couple of thoughts with the beginning of the year. I just want to say a really huge thank you to my colleagues on the board for all the work that we've been doing over the past few months. We had our first board meeting on September 10th, and it's only been four months, and it has been unprecedented times. And our board members, many of us who are new to being in township roles and others who are merchants at the peak of their season, have been volunteering because we believe so strongly in the mission of the Cid and the urgent need to help our businesses. And in the absence of an executive director, we have all dedicated a lot of extra time to get all of this work underway. So I just want to say thank you. Also, a huge thank you to Marla. I think that, you know, I love seeing her presentations and reflecting on the big picture of it all because Marla really enabled us to operationalize a lot of this in such a short time. And also, a lot of talented community members have stepped up and a significant number of merchants across all five districts, which I think is so key, have so enthusiastically gotten involved. There's a handful of vocal opponents of this effort, and we do spend time gleaming through their lengthy communications for productive questions and recommendations, and we do consider those. At the same time, we we try to keep moving forward and not allow ourselves to be sidetracked from the mission that we have been entrusted with. So I'm just really excited for the coming year and so excited for Ryan Gleason's leadership. That's such a key role to be filled. Looking forward to identifying our advisory board and just working with everybody going forward.
Tracy, thank you. I that was very nicely said. And I just thank you for saying that.
Thanks. Thanks for listening.
Can hear you.
I would just like to, I would just like to make it clear that there are two individuals that are on the Zoom that had had their hand raised. However, it was after the public comment period, and I just want to let them know that we are not ignoring them, that the public comment period had been over.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or board comments, board announcements? I kind of, I've joined the two final items. They overlap.
I could just really quickly, we we were sharing at the very end of the meeting, and I know we're going a little late here, just any business updates? We said we were going to do that. I had a couple to mention. This was already mentioned. Peters is relaunching his Vinnie's Brick Oven Pan Pizza, so we're excited about that.
Same location, correct?
Same location. Does anyone know for sure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Same location.
Icebox Cryotherapy officially opened in Short Hills, so that looks pretty cool. We're a little sad, more than a little. We're very sad to see that Kuntai is closing their location in our community. They are moving to Southern New Jersey. They do have some nearby businesses in Westfield and Clark. There's been some informal news of something potentially exciting coming into that location. That's not official yet. And other news that it looks like the liquor license is back with the Charlie Brown's property. We had heard previously that it was being auctioned separately, but it now looks to be back. So that is such a prime area of real estate. Hopefully, with pandemic and restrictions opening up would be just a really great location for a lot of restaurants. But does anyone else have news that we should know about?
No. No, thanks, Tracy. That that's all, I mean, other than the one restaurant that's been here as long as I have, longer. Any other, any other comments or announcements or anything for the good of the order? Okay, I think that's, I think we've run through our, yeah, I think we've run through it.
We've covered a lot.
Yeah, we got a lot done. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Bye, everyone. Good luck.